All right, being 02 here on January 10th, open meeting. Up at 7 o'clock with the zoning bylaw diagnostic with CMRPC, Ron Baron, and still waiting for some ZDA members, and then we have a couple of members of the EDC. Is he still trying to log in, Randy?
Um, he's here. I see, but his microphone's turned off. Ron? Ron, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
I was just muted in case there was feedback. Unfortunately, I don't have a set of headphones with me tonight.
So, I get, Ron, do you want to give us any updates since we last met as far as any progress on your guys' agenda?
Sure. Since we last met, we had discussed, the last time we met, we discussed trying to wrap up the outreach piece. That's one of the things that this meeting is supposed to be taking care of. We wanted to talk about to the Economic Development Committee and the ZDA to try to get some more town perspectives on issues with the zoning bylaws written. We've been working on cobbling together a menu of potential routes that the town can take towards pursuing the changes that the town, that we can present to you. With the goal of hopefully in the next couple of meetings, starting to go over that and then make a firm decision on the direction that the board's going to want to take as far as how in-depth we want the changes to go. Again, the way that this, to back up for anybody who's not familiar with how this process has gone, what we had done is started to working on this last year where we have done a zoning diagnostic for the town where we essentially zoning, we took some land use goals that the town had previously done in prior plans. And we analyzed each of the sections of the zoning bylaw based on how it either complements or doesn't complement various zoning, or various land use goals that the town has articulated over the last few years. There was seven different goals that we had found from various plans. And we were able to measure the, compare the different zoning bylaws against those and give it a numeric score so we can get sort of a sense of what the best place is to start. Changing the bylaw, doing this bylaw reform process would be. After that, what we wanted to do is we wanted to try to collect some more information from various people who have interfaced with the zoning bylaw. We started that in early last year. Obviously, outreach has become more of a challenge since March of last year. So, a lot of the outreach efforts have dragged on longer than we initially wanted them to. We've had to improvise, come up with a few things. We have managed to do a few of the outreach pieces that we had had in mind. We did do a virtual focus group with some business owners in towns that did include a few residents. We did a survey that we had launched that was townwide survey that collected some interesting questions. It was a pretty short survey, mostly just to gauge interest and see if anybody had any particular areas of town or areas of the bylaw that they were concerned about. And then, this piece was, the idea behind this piece is we were hoping that, you know, some other committees that have direct access, direct working relationship with the zoning bylaw could provide us with some additional feedback. We've also, you know, had a, there was a really good write-up from the building inspector, zoning officer, that we got at the beginning of the year that highlighted a few of the things that we did identify with the initial part of the process. So, what we had identified as areas of concern at the beginning of this was the couple of sections in the bylaw really jumped out, at least at me. And, you know, as we worked through with the planning board, they've agreed with some of this. You know, the first thing is obviously the section three of the use table. There's a lot of things that are in there right now that are by right processes. They're by right uses that in other towns would either be a special permit or would be, at the very least, have a site plan review process. There isn't a site plan review process in there. So, there's limited powers for the planning board to be able to do these uses. There's been a lot of discussion about some of the definitions, obviously. You know, when the agricultural zone was established, for instance, it was a more agriculture, there were more agricultural uses going on right now. Now, it's more of a rural residential. So, you know, some of the things that were allowed there by right and were allowed because the active farmers didn't necessarily want the town to tell them what to do with their land. That's not necessarily what's happening here as much as there was when the zoning bylaw was written. And so, you know, we have to, you know, we're discussing whether or not it makes sense to change that. And then, there are other pieces that jumped out. Some of the parking regulations seemed fairly inconsistent. The multifamily parking regulation seemed, you know, came across as very high and that makes it very difficult to meet some of the land use goals that the town has articulated, particularly about providing a range of housing options for all residents. And there's also been some discussion about how the bylaw itself is structured. There's some of the sections are not.
Excuse me, parliamentary author? Hello?
That would be a question to the manager.
Why? My name's Bob Howard and I'm on the Board of Appeals. And we were to meet with you tonight. We're late.
Yep, we're here.
Okay. I'll just listen, I guess.
Yes, we're just getting a brief overview from our representative from Central Mass Planning, Regional Planning Commission. So, once he gives us a brief overview, then we'll be asking for more information, input from the various committee members and zoning board of appeal members.
Okay, I'll sit tight. Yeah, I didn't know just how to get in.
All right, well, yeah, thank you very much. I know this is always more challenging over, over long distances than it would be in person. Essentially, what I was going over was sort of what we had done so far and what we would like to do tonight. Basically, what we had said, just to kind of do the reader's digest version of what I just said, is we had looked at the zoning bylaw in relation to some land use goals the town had articulated in other plans. And tried to assess which ones seems to be the, had the potential most, the most ripe for reform. They were sort of the low-hanging fruit, which are the ones that we should be approaching first if we're going to do a re, revisit any of the zoning bylaws.
Sure.
So, what we were hoping to do, we've gotten a little bit of feedback from various members of the community. And we really wanted to get some additional feedback from people who interface with the zoning bylaw on a regular basis. So, that's why we asked members of the ZDA to be here tonight. And Economic Development Committee, because we want to know where are the biggest barriers that we're seeing? Where are the biggest choke points? Where does the process get slowed down? What are you seeing as the types of code that's having the biggest effect on potential commercial development or residential development? You know, are there ways that the bylaw is written that allow things that maybe shouldn't be allowed or shouldn't be as easy to be allowed, in your opinion? You know, where do you guys see the issues?
Well, it seems to me it's vice versa. I'll tell you that.
In what sense?
Well, in a lot of senses where things just go directly to you and all of a sudden you make a decision. And I do think in some of these situations with land-taking or giving land to certain people that the zoning board, I think, should have a say in. Or at least have somebody there and either in a yea or nay position based on the number of people. If it's a three to two, and then we'll have a representative come to you and tell them how we, how the zoning board feels on this particular situation.
Do you have a specific example that you can?
Well, I'll give you an example. I come from Yarmouth, Massachusetts, county Yarmouth. And I was on their Board of Appeals and basically, we were the kingmaker. We used to have four or five appeals or variances a night. And we never had anybody from the, in fact, the planning commission had to sign off on, on how they felt. But we were the kingmaker. What the Board of Appeals said went regardless of the planning board. They, if they checked it off, that's fine. If they didn't, it went by them. But it wasn't, it wasn't a stopgap. Do I make myself clear?
So, you're suggesting that the ZDA should have more?
Yes, at least that. But your board, your, when I first came here, which was six years ago, I was flabbergasted that you had the power that you had. And it was in your bylaws going, I don't know how far back, and that you were the kingmakers. And I was just kind of sup.
Could you explain a bit more about the kingmaker? I don't quite understand.
Well, what you, if you get about seeding land? And you do it. We don't have any say in it at all.
I think, I think that on the cape there, that the way that the permitting authority is structured is different than the way ours.
Oh, it is, definitely. I won't disagree with that at all.
But the thing is, is that we're appointed and the planning board is elected, which is, which.
Well, that's a different story too.
Right. So, because they're elected, they, it makes more.
You have more power and you put more power with the people.
To the town where we as board members are just appointed by this election.
Yeah. Or the town manager.
Hey, Bob, I think this gentleman, Ron, is giving kind of like a presentation to us. So, it might be worth it for us just to let him finish what he has to say.
All right. Sorry.
Go ahead, Ron.
No, that's, that's fine. I'm the, I am curious, you know, I think that's interesting information and I think we can continue, you know, having that conversation.
Yeah, I'm here to help and not, not, not to disturb anything, okay?
Yeah, no, no, no problem at all. So, the kinds of things that, you know, I think that's an interesting point about the, where the authority lies. And I know Randy may disagree with me. I'm not sure if that's within the scope of what we're trying to achieve here. But in some senses it is, because, you know, some of the, the issues that, you know, we've talked about a lot with the planning board has been, again, about the, the number of uses that are allowed by right versus special permit. And, you know, whether or not there should be more opportunities for the planning board or the ZDA to, to review plans as, as they come up.
Yeah.
So, honestly, the, you know, I didn't have too much more to go over with the, as far as a presentation goes. I wanted just to give everybody, get everybody up to speed on what we have done so far and what we're planning to do next. And again, the next thing that we're working on, once we finish this process, is, you know, we're working on collecting a number of case studies that we're going to have summarized that we would like to be able to present to the, the working committee in the next month or two that will provide some options for potential directions. And then, we'll spend the next few weeks between now and the midpoint of the summer developing some concrete proposals for the, for the town to submit to, for the board to submit to town, probably in the fall.
I think what I was asking is to have at least some input, maybe no voting, but at least have some, you have at least the board's input concerning a situation. And that's all. I'm not, I'm not trying to change the, the planning board or the, on that. I just feel that it'd be nice to have some input.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, to the chair.
Go right ahead, Ron.
I believe our meetings, is this Bob?
Yeah.
Our meetings are open to the public, so anybody can attend and provide feedback to any of those decisions that we make. So, nothing's done, nothing's done in a vacuum. It is open and you're welcome to join us at any time.
Okay.
All right, Ron, thank you for the quick, for the overview as far as that goes. I guess, I guess, I think the main thing why we, we ask, the planning board asked, so ZDA, it was the EDC to attend this meeting and stuff, put forth any issues that you guys have seen, especially the ZDA, that you guys seen is people applying variances where there's a deficiency in our zoning bylaw, which we could alternate. I mean, yeah, we could alter the bylaw, so as far as if you have something that comes in front of you. Frank, go right ahead and elaborate.
So, you know, one of the things that I think that it's come up in the past five or six years, you know, for one big project. And it looks like that the town has adjusted the bylaw somewhat, is how we look at recreation uses in the town. The bylaw, you know, before it just said other recreation uses. But we, we had a, a pretty good-sized project and it was, you know, ended up in court and in the whole nine yards for, for a project that's still on by law. It's like, it's like section 3.2B. It has the recreation uses in an agricultural zone. So, it used to be, it looks like we've changed some of the agriculture uses to as a, as a recreation uses as a right to special permit. But I think that it's, you know, the appeal that we ended up getting was not exactly what's on there. And it kind of fell into like a gray area. And there's no way that we can possibly, you know, identify all those recreation uses. But we do have other private predominantly open recreation uses that is allowed by right in an agricultural zone. And it is just too much gray area with what we consider necessarily, I think, recreation. And, you know, it could allow things that we don't necessarily anticipate on that that in the town that we're not, like, there's no way that we could think of right now, you know? So, that, I mean, the other thing that I kind of thought is, is that, and I know that this has come in front of you guys before, not necessarily in front of us, but there was some, there's some conflict between, like, some landlords doing like events, you know, a couple of times a year. And, and, you know, they wanted site plan review and, you know, maybe, you know, we come up with something like that. And I'm not saying that we should just avoid site plan review or whatever. But, you know, we, you know, have some structure over, over some of the parking issues and things like that with some of these, you know, events that go on in the town. I'm trying to think what else. We had some issues with some uses within the community business zone. And, you know, I don't really know, and Randy might know, and maybe Ron might know, you know, because of the way, the way it's been, and you guys on the planning board have definitely had this issue more than we have, is that, you know, some of these people come in front of the planning board and they go through the entire process with you. And, and you may not agree with the uses that they're proposing on that. And then, they can't appeal that zoning use until they get to the building permit stage. And it just seems absolutely ridiculous to me. Not that I want more appeals from the zoning board, but, but it just kind of seems foolish that we don't have something in place that can potentially say, you know, other than a letter and from, you know, whoever the zoning enforcement officers, like, this is allowed use, that there's no real appeal process before they get to you guys. Because then it puts you guys in an awfully awkward predicament. Like, well, we don't agree with this uses, but we have to approve this site plan? And then, after everything's approved and all that, you've gone through all that aggravation, then it comes to us and we say, well, yes or no, or whatever, and then it ends up in court. You know, I don't, Ron, I don't know if there's, if there's something that can be done, you know, that we can build into the bylaw that way.
Through the chair.
Please discuss it.
Go right ahead, Alicia.
So, through the chair, at EDC last night, they talked about making more special permitting and less noes. So, because under special permit, we have a lot more purview on that, to Frank's point. So, I, not that that will change the direction as to how the process goes, but that might give us more oversight and it will allow us to not necessarily see the future, but allow for things that we don't anticipate. So, 20 years ago marijuana would have never been a thought. So, it was nowhere in the zoning bylaws and now all of a sudden CDC is everywhere. So, that would allow us to kind of grow with the times and adjust as necessary.
Good. Be more flexible.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, the, considering site plan review power would also be something that would be a good move for the bylaw. Site plan review doesn't give you the right necessarily to stop a project because it is still a by right use, but it at least gives you the authority to negotiate with the developer and to try to, to get to a place where, you know, you're, everyone's more comfortable with the direction of a plan. So, it would, definitely, it's good for the types of uses that you don't necessarily want to be blocking, but you also don't necessarily want people just to put up anything willy-nilly. You want to be able to have some sort of authority to review these things and make sure that the parking's being taken care of, et cetera. To Frank's question about putting some sort of, it sounded like you, what you're getting at is putting in some sort of process workflow for, for, into the bylaw itself that, you know, had, sort of guides a person from the, the permit to the zoning board to the ZDA without it kind of bouncing back and forth. I'm not sure how that works. I don't know, Randy, are you familiar with anything like that ending up being part of a zoning bylaw?
Well, the problem, the way it's done in Charleston is the zoning officer will not make a formal decision until a formal permit is before him. So, until something is approved, like, he can't approve, say, in a, something that is done through a site plan until the planning board approves that. And whether the planning board defers, like, somebody's asking for a variance on parking, for instance, the planning board can approve it with a condition. But then, to Frank's point, it puts the onus on the ZDA that they approve a variance for it. Or if they don't approve a variance and deny the variance, now the person has to come back to the planning board and start over again. And it makes it a very onerous process all the way around. And if, and I agree, I mean, I, this is, this town's unique because I've always been, it's like, you need the variance. Go get the variance first. It's the cheapest and shortest route. When you're talking about engineering and everything, if you need a variance of parking, whatever, do that step of the process first because then the ZDA is not pressured to make a decision one way or the other. They can make a decision based on whatever's before them. And then, based on that decision, they can, the applicant can move forward to either, if they grant the variance and great, then that problem's resolved. If not, they would have to amend, they would design their site plan to meet the requirements. But it does kind of leave the ZDA in an awkward position to have to deal with a variance after the fact. And it also puts it even more onerous on the applicant. If the ZDA denies it, they now end up coming back to the planning board again or appealing to the courts, such as the recreational use. And I think I'm segueing here too, but to Frank's point on recreation use, there's ways of handling that, that where I think we need to tighten up our definitions tremendously. I mean, you can make it something for active recreation, passive recreation, break it down so that you're in a category, because you like, you don't want to make a park go through the site plan process. But when you have somebody doing some type of active recreation, that that would require to maybe a special permit to go to the planning board. But somebody designing a, you know, just walking trails in a park and everything is recreation, but you don't want to put them to, necessarily put them through the site plan process.
Good point.
So, I think, I don't know if we come up with a method where if the applicant knows they can't meet the requirements for whatever approval they're going to be requesting, do they necessarily need the denial from the zoning officer to go to the ZDA? You have to, Frank, do you require something from the zoning officer to deny whatever they were proposing? Do whether it be a parking requirement with the size of a sign?
So, I don't think by the statute that we're required to have any sort of denial by a zoning enforcement officer to force someone to apply for a variance or a special permit. But typically, we have the recording secretary direct any applicant to the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer first. Because we've run into situations where someone comes and applies for the variance and they don't even need the variance. So, they're reading the bylaw wrong or they got the site backs wrong. So, they spend all this time and money trying to apply for a variance and the building inspector's like, why are you even doing that? I would have just given you a building permit for whatever. So.
Yeah. It's a two-way sword, yeah.
Right. So, as a custom, we do kind of have people do that first before they come. And then, he'll issue a denial letter and give them the reasons. And, and it's helpful to us in a lot of ways because I think it narrows down some of the zoning issues that they might need instead of just some, them coming to the board and saying, well, I need a variance, but they don't really have an idea. Because I'd probably say, I would say maybe about 50% of the people that come before the board aren't necessarily represented by, you know, an engineer or attorney or something like that. So, they're just trying to do it on their own. And, you know, you kind of have to, you know, they don't really know what the stat, what the law is or, you know, like, how to explain what they want to do sometimes, you know?
Can you remind me, is the, is all, are all special permits handled through the ZDA? Or are there conditions that the planning board sometimes handles?
No, they're all done through the planning board.
They're all done through the planning board?
Yeah, everything.
No, so, we have, we'll do only 48 special permits. So, the ones that are statutory. The stuff that's in the zoning bylaw that says needs a special permit, that's, the, the, the planning board issues that as a, as the permitting authority. So, if it says in the bylaw, special permit needed, then the planning board will handle that. If it's a, if it's like a use thing under chapter 48, then, then we'll get that.
And variances flow through you.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, I need to attend another meeting, but I will be, you're going to be on for a while?
Another half hour for this, for this part of our agenda. So, we'll check back in.
You don't send an email? You can always send an email or something if you have more input, you know, you want to get discussed at another meeting.
Well, the, the only other thing that I'll, I'll let you guys go, is that we've definitely seen more people with pork chop lots, recently. I mean, I've had, we've had three or four that, you know, have various issues with the, the retreat lot things, and we're definitely starting to scale a little bit more of that. So I don't know if, if the planning board, you know, it's that something that you guys wanted to kind of tighten up a little bit? I don't know if you.
What kind of issues do you see as far as what do people look for in size of variance?
We had one, um, sometimes, you know, sometimes it was a, a lot that was created, um, under a prior version of the, the zoning, the bylaw, and the people of, like, didn't do anything to the lots, and then the bylaw changed, or they, they tried to, you know, um, you know, they merged them for tax purposes, and now they want to unmerge them, or it has some sort of odd shape in it that, you know, then there's some, you know, we've made like a minor adjustment to the bylaw, and now the lot is, you know, out of whack, and, and they need a variance or, uh, whatever, so. We have seen more of those as of late than I think, you know, the past couple of years than, than before. And I don't know whether, you know, I know sometimes do something like you can't have, or, you know, so many retreat lots within so many feet of each other, or an upland requirement, whatever. I don't know if you guys have considered any of that stuff, but, uh, uh, we have seen more of them looking for that stuff, for variances and stuff.
Frank, before you go, real quick, Sue Gelfen made a comment in reference to, uh, common driveways. Is that the same thing with the, uh, used frontage lots that you've seen, or just the multiple lots from one driveway?
No, I, I don't, you know, we haven't seen anything from that in quite a while. You know, I was just, we, we haven't done this at all since I've been on the zoning board. You know, I've been on the zoning board probably since like 2004. So, you know, I just kind of kept things in the back of my mind that have come up over the years. And that was one of the things that kind of stuck out, is that there was some, you know, there was some issues with the, the common driveway a long time ago, but when I reviewed it, like I told Sue yesterday, that, you know, those were one of the things, but then I went back and looked at our bylaw now, and it's much better than it used to be.
It's, it's pretty limiting, so, yeah, controls it, yeah.
Yeah, and I know sometimes they won't even allow them, so I think ours is pretty good, actually.
Right.
All right, let me jump off, hopefully I'll jump back in.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Are we ready to go, Frank?
I think Frank just logged out.
Okay, well, I've, then if he's going to log out, then I guess I will do the same, all right?
Okay, thank you for coming.
Yeah, I look forward to having more conversations, I, I think that was great.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Okay. Okay, look forward to seeing you and, or talking with you again, really. That was really good.
Thank you, sir.
All right, now, is there anyone from the EDC that, uh, has come across anything in the, in the bylaw, or have they talked to someone that wanted to come into town, do business, and?
Well, actually, yeah, we were, um, they had a, the first, like, meeting in a while, it was more of a workshop last night, where we were discussing, you know, what things can be done within the town, uh, bylaws that would, you know, basically promote economic development. And, uh, it was brought up about the site plan process being, you know, uh, not necessarily going through the board, but it's a costly process for any type of applicant, so they have to spend all that time and money to get through the process before they can even, you know, build or do whatever they want to do. And is there opportunities where, you know, it could be streamlined, or put into situations where, um, I had, I had dealt with it in the past, I brought up the meeting last night, is, we actually, um, I broke it down to class one and test, class two site plan, so when you have a, a tiny business, maybe it's been there for a while and everything, and they have existing parking and all that, is that they wouldn't necessarily have to go, they would have to get a, a site plan approved by staff, but it'd be more like existing addition, to show the town you have the required, even if you were changing the use as long as the use met the requirement. I mean, it's typical with the development, where we just had their pro automotive on Route 20. I mean, that's a perfect example, there's an existing building there, um, there was an existing parking lot there, that typically at times like that, it, you know, this all can be handled by staff, not to take work away from the planning board, but on the same note, it entices people to, consider doing development in town versus out of town. And it, we're still making sure it maintains our bylaws, because we put very strict requirements on them, like you can only do so much expansion, you know, within, on a building or improvements in a building, you know, it definitely has to do with certain uses and, you know, expansion of parking and things like that. It, you know, it's limiting, but when it comes to small mom and pop type businesses, it helps them, and they're the, I mean, when you have a large business, they're, you know, they have the professionals, they're prepared to do something like that. But if you're trying to do it with the large, the small mom and pop type businesses, you know, fine, it's a financial burden to them. So I didn't know if it's something that the board wants to consider about breaking down, how site plans are handled, you know, it goes through all the department staff, like a regular site plan would be. The only thing is on, on very small projects where there is either no improve, you know, building additions or improvements, you're using existing facilities or very limited. Um, and it can be limited to whatever the board wants it to be. And, you know, from an EDC standpoint, I don't know if that's something the, uh, board wants to consider, or if they want to maintain control and have the site plan that you still go before them.
Well, the letter that Kurt sent out, um, earlier today kind of talks about that, and it talks about number of employees versus building size. And I think that's a brilliant idea, because most of the business coming into town is small. We don't have the Amazon warehouses. You don't have the huge Carl stores, I mean, you get some of them, but the majority are the smaller ones, and we want to be attractive, um, over the other town, so I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, and, uh, if you had the large Amazon type business, they have their professionals and everything, and I wouldn't say money's no object, but they don't balk at that type of thing, you know, so.
Through, through the chair, I, I heard that, Randy, you brought that up last night, and I didn't see Kurt, I didn't, maybe I wasn't on the email from Kurt, but I, I was wondering what the guidelines were, because it makes total sense. I mean, we can take, we can free up some burden off the planning board.
Oh, I'd be happy to get the, what I did in the, the last town I was in and share it with you, and it breaks it down to, you know, what the individual requirements for. And, I mean, they can be amended in any way, but I'll show you what I did last time and see if it's anything that people might think is compatible here in Charlton. I'd be happy to share that.
But, to be clear, that requires a bylaw change or something at town meeting, I'm, I'm assuming.
Well, that's why if we're doing a complete bylaw changes, it's time to consider it now, or, I mean, it can be done separately as well, too.
Yep.
Through the chair.
Go right ahead, John.
Ron, do you have any examples of this in other towns that you've worked with? Any, like, I don't know if it's a financial threshold or development under so many, so much money, that it would be more of an internal process with the, uh, the staff instead of the planning board?
Uh, and to be perfectly honest, that, I haven't come across this idea before, but I think it sounds great. I would actually be really interested to see, Randy, if you could share with me what you had done in, uh, prior towns, to see how that, that breaks down. Um, it seems to make a lot of sense.
Uh, through the chair, just my only concern is ceding any of our power to, uh, we're elected to do a job, and ceding any of our, it, it's what we've, we've signed up for, and just going to, one of the, one of the caveats of the, uh, planning and training program I went to, or the, the staff went to, or was able to go to at Holy Cross, was an offer last year because of COVID. But, they said, the, the main, the main thrust is that you should never cede your power, your board's power, to another entity, because that's what you are structured to do, so. I just, neither here nor there, but that's just a, just on that out there, so.
Yep, and, and if I, I could, John, and I, I agree with that, but I think, I think, I think the board would have full power over how they wanted to, what those limits were, right? I mean, if somebody wants to add a parking space, and, and it's more, and, and without, without having to spend all that money, and it's a local established business, I, I think, or, yeah.
Yeah.
Through the chair.
Depends on those.
But, just to be clear, that we had, you know, it, it can snowball out of, out of, uh, maybe a flow chart would be, maybe Ron, a flow chart for, I think what, I think what we're struggling with is more of a process than anything else. Like, something we could hand, hand an applicant, Randy, or Ron, or it's like, these are kind of the, the steps that you need to take, and these are kind of some of the hurdles you might encounter. And, and, and I don't know if Ron has, has, has given that, has been able to produce that for any other towns or such, as we get further, and I'll align with that, but I think the process is huge, you know, and, and that would relieve a lot of the confusion with applicants, and, and save them a lot of money if they realized what they needed to do and not what they wanted to do, or what they could do with the land they, they're trying to build.
I'll tell you the, I, I agree with you and, and partly disagree, I mean, I, and you actually gave me another thought that maybe the planning board could do it, but the engineering is where it hits, and I, I have dealt with this over and over again with engineers, it's like, it, like you said in the last town, I had a 75-point checklist. You go through the checklist, and you check the boxes of the ones that apply to you, like, you know, are you in historic district, and, you know, the setbacks, you know, all the different requirements that you would typically supply in a plan. Well, then they go through the process, and the engineer's like, no, we don't need to do that, no, we don't need that, it's, yes, you do, so now, they pay their engineer to do it again, you know, it's like, we're not telling, we're not asking, this is what the town requires, and we won't look at this application until you do it, so. It's, isn't, I mean, I went six months with an applicant before they finally submitted, you know, the engineering plan, because they're like, yeah, we're not going to do that. Okay, the planning board's not going to hear it, you know? Until they finally realize, oh, the planning board really won't hear this application until it's complete. And there's a lot of expenses involved with that. So, maybe the planning.
Through the chair, that's the biggest thing.
Um, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Randy, you froze, so I thought you were done, I apologize, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, maybe the process where we could make it a, still keep it before the planning board for approval, but maybe reduce the amount of requirements for, based on the type of project it is, where we might not need a full-blown engineering and stormwater management plan because of, you know, they're not increasing any impervious area or something to that effect. So the planning board maintains control, because it's not the application fees that get people, it's the engineering costs. That's where the big money is spent on these applications. Between their engineer designing the plan and our peer reviewer reviewing the plan, it gets expensive for the applicant.
Is there a recent, is there a recent project that you could, um, refer to, or?
Um, well, I don't, Pete Borries here, I mean, they, the, the, um, I don't know what they spent on there and for designing that wellfield access road, I mean, that, are you talking about the expenses that are involved with it? Or are you saying something that might not need it?
Yeah, a project that might not need it or, or shouldn't have had it.
Well, the problem is, they go away, they won't do it. We have, um, you probably are familiar, all familiar with the Pegasus Motors that was on that, that little building across on Route 20. We've had numerous people asked to do something in that building, it's, I don't think it's even 600 square feet, somebody wanted to put a little thrift shop in there and everything, but they have to do a site plan for it. The site plan just is, you know, cost prohibitive for anybody to want to open a business in that building.
Sure, sure.
People just walk away, you know?
So through the chair, just one more time. So I guess, so the, so we, so not to put the cart before the horse, so the, the bylaw would have to change, so it'd give, give it a gray area, so that gray area, not a gray area, or just a, allow for more space for a little, smaller project not to jump through the hoops. I think that's what you're getting at, Randy. And then, and we wouldn't have any say on that, there would be no, no, no ability for us, or should be having, we wouldn't need to, there would be just more of a administrative, administrative, I cannot say that word, administrative review process, and they would just move on with their, with their expansion, or their.
Right, I mean, but they, you, you could say something maybe on a typical situation like that, where it's an existing building, nothing's going to change. But the change of use based on the bylaws says that it needs a site plan. Um, if you want, like, if there was going to be any change, like increase in size of building, increase in parking, everything, then that may trigger going to the board, if you want to try to maintain control as much as you can and not, you know, give away the source, so to speak. If you wanted to work with the, within existing buildings that wouldn't be increasing in size.
Through the chair.
Ideas.
Another, another thought on this, John, not to relinquish control, but I think a lot of small businesses look to get advice before they start spending the money on the engineering. So just to get an answer of like, what am I in for here? How big of a project is it? So, like, to get counseling or advice from the planning board or the EDC, just to get an answer, so they can kind of scope out their project, would be very useful to some of these businesses. Otherwise, if they go into, and, you know, an engineer, they hire an engineer, it may be over-engineered for their purposes, because the engineer is just going to do absolutely everything, and it may not be required, but if they could get counsel, you know, upfront, some consulting from EDC or planning board, or an ombudsman of planning board, I think that would, that would help, uh, small businesses as well.
Through the chair, we could always split the difference and not require a site plan if it's an existing building, but require that they come before the planning board. So we still have full say, we can still look for traffic, we can still look for, um, site, a line of site issues, we can still ask the questions, and then if at that time we feel that a site plan is required, because they're going to be expanding, and they're going to be adding parking, et cetera, et cetera, we can do that, but initially we can say, well, we won't require a site plan on a project on, for an existing building under this size, and then it'll give the planning board full authority to ask for a site plan, but in case, in the event where they might just want to add something goofy, we're not requiring it, but it gives us that option, so they still have to come before us, we're not rubber stamping anything. We're just, we have the right then to waive the engineering plans if we so choose.
I, I think it can't be subjective, I think it needs to, I, I'm for it, but it needs to have either Golem Rock Square foot, you know? Because if we get into, we're, we're, we can't be subjective, we, we, we have a set of rules, we have to apply it equally to everyone. These are the rules, it, it's a shame it's that way, so, so we got to make a rule that, that still there's some lenience inside of that, that, that area, which they could do whatever they want to do within limits, but it doesn't have us being the kingmaker.
I agree completely with that, yes.
Well, that guy did that, and I, like, we don't even want to go down there, I don't think.
You need rules, and you need set rules, and you need to say, if it's 1,200 square feet, if it's 1,205, sorry, you need the site plan. 1,200 square feet it is, I completely agree with that, in that it's extremely clear to the applicant that this is this and that is that, and if it falls outside of that, I'm sorry, but it's too bad.
Mr. Chair?
Go right ahead.
What if you called it a cursory review instead of site plan review? And that would allow the applicant to not have to go through and have, pay, have the expense of graves, uh, reviewing the, any plans they submit. They would still have to probably hire an engineer to do low-level drawings for you to, to consider, but they would save on both ends. Their engineer wouldn't have to draw full-scale, full-depth plans, and they also wouldn't have to pay graves to review on certain types of, say renovations or existing buildings. More so, I mean, new buildings, new lots, new pavement, that, that changes things, but for the existing bit, structures that are there, that someone just wants to reuse or do a change of use, and not do any paving, and not do any parking lot changes, I, I think that lower level stuff could be handled very easily through the board with the help of staff. I, I think that lower level stuff could be handled very easily through the board with the help of staff rather than, again, having to have graves review something. And that's where all the costs come in. It's doing, you know, the, the full submittal with 12 copies of the plans and then having graves review it. And then, and it also adds a lot of time as well. Where it's not just getting a set of plans to Randy, say a week beforehand for, for the planning board to review and being able to get on your next meeting. So.
Yeah, I just think some clear cut, black and white criteria need to be said. I think that's, that's the sense that, uh, I'm getting from the input. What do you think, Randy?
Oh, I agree. I definitely agree with John. If you, you, you have to set whatever it's going to be, you know, the plan board will have to decide what those guidelines are. But, um, in to John's point, definitely don't want to be subjective because then that, that's when you're setting yourself up for failure. Because you can say, why are you making me do this when you didn't make the last guy? And, you know, we don't want to be, something to be challenged in court either, if it ever got that far. So, um, if it, this is some straight guidelines are set so an applicant can look and say, okay, I believe I follow these guidelines and they can come show the board if they do, like doing a cursory review or however the board wants to handle it, then great. And if they don't, then the answer is no, you have to go through the full blown site plan.
Um, I was just going to add, if, if I could, that, um, you know, I've, I've seen in some towns that have set up official, um, I believe they refer to them as like pre permitting review processes, whereas essentially is what you're talking about where they just say before you submit it to step one, bring it to the board, try to get on the agenda, bring it to the planner, put it on the agenda, let the board take a look at it and then give you a determination of what they think the process is going to have to be based on what you're trying to do. Um, and I know a few towns that have done that, they do, most of the ones I know of, they do it for, for residential developments. Um, I know a couple of towns that have a lot of them have done that for residential, but I don't see a reason why you couldn't do something like that for commercial as well, just to make it a simplified process. I don't know if that fits in with what you're, you have in mind, Randy.
Well, we are doing that here now, since I've got here, we started doing that now. When we have something that's coming in, um, we try to have a pre development meeting for whatever that project may be. Um, the problem is when you get to the smaller type projects and everything, they come and say, I want to do this. And then they hear they have to go through the whole process and the engineering costs, that's when they tend to buy, you know, it's like, all I want to do is open a secondhand clothing store. You know, in this existing building to them, it's like, what's the big deal, you know? And it's going to cost them more to go through the site plan review and is for, to renovate the building. They, you know, it's hard to wrap their head around. So they end up basically not following through.
Now, um, is there anything else on the EDC that came up last? When you guys had, Randy?
Well, I mean, they, they also is, uh, you know, it's been discussion and, um, about looking at, of course, the Route 20 corridor and some of the other main areas about where, you know, how to improve or maybe possibly amend the zoning to allow for more types of uses and everything in the appropriate areas. Not maybe allowing more uses in a certain zone that would be like, say, and just to use an example and, uh, uh, BEP zone or whatever it would be, you know, to allow for more types of uses. So they might attract more businesses and not be so limiting. Typically like on the Route 20 corridor or main roads like that. It was also just, also a suggestion about looking at outside of town on larger lots of land. Um, my opinion on that, like, it might be difficult because there might be a large lot of land that's vacant and everything that could be used as a business park. But it's typically surrounded by a bunch of houses. And they're all residential abutters that are probably going to be totally against it and be a long uphill battle. So it's on main roads, you know, once it's 920, maybe there's opportunities on 31, but you know, some other roads and everything, I think it would be very difficult to get anything approved.
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
I have a couple of specific things that I wouldn't mind, like to ask you guys to consider. Uh, the first, the first is in the agricultural zone, two family dwellings are not allowed. So we have a, you know, we, right now we're trying, a lot of people are trying to get their in-laws to move in or, you know, other family members to move in or have multi generational families under the same roof. But a two families not allowed, so they're stuck trying to squeeze under the definition of an accessory apartment. And that's very difficult to do with how the zoning enforcement officer currently interprets that definition. So I, I, I just know some residents that are trying to go through that process and it hasn't been kind of as easy as it should have. So 80, I'm going to say 80, 85% of our, our town is in the A zone. And all those homes with, you know, minimum 60,000 square foot lots can only do a single family home with an accessory apartment. Where a multi fam, where a two family, not even a multi family, just a two family dwelling would allow them more flexibility to kind of, to kind of get done what they'd like to do. So, so I kind of like you to consider changing that no, that N to a, to a Y, if you wouldn't mind. Uh, some other issues I, I've come across in the village districts. Um, there are some larger lots, larger lots in that zone. So much like when the fire, uh, department was proposing a public safety building on, on their property on the Sonicom Road that, that's village zone. They had to go for a variance because there's a maximum 25 foot building setback. So that, that's great on a 10,000 or 20,000 square foot lot. But once you get into some of the larger lots, like I have a 60,000 square foot lot. And if I want to put a building there, it has to be within 25 feet of the road. So that means I have another acre of land that's not usable because the building has to be tucked right up against the road. So I, I understand how it works for certain parcels, but there's also other parcels where it makes a lot of the land kind of not even usable. So I, I don't, maybe an option would be to say on lots over a certain square footage, maybe whether it be 30 or 40,000 square feet, that maximum 25 foot setback goes away or it can, doesn't have to be in effect.
Right.
And then lastly, I guess, when you look at the zoning table, um, like, like Alicia said earlier, there, there's a lot of no's there and those no's were put there back in the eighties. And, and that really limits your flexibility as a planning board or even as a developer to propose different uses that, that might not be foreseen to five, 10, 15 years from now. So it's a no. And, and to try and change zoning isn't the easiest thing to do, especially on a case by case basis. So I'd ask that if you look at that zoning table, whether it be in the agriculture, any zone at all, and you think that there might be a possibility of some type of project meeting that use could work, that, that you make it a spe, a special permit instead of just a dead no. And I know that puts a lot of onus on, on the planning board and you guys, just to kind of make those decisions on a case by case basis. But again, as the people on your board change with the times, then so will kind of what, what the town's needs are going to change. So hopefully the board changes in unison with the town's needs. And they'll have the ability to say yes or no under that special permit. Instead of a developer coming in, looking at the zoning table and saying it's a no and walking away when it could be able to work with, you know, just a little bit of consideration and effort from everyone's part.
And through the chair, Peter, I agree. We talked about that a little bit last night. The EDC meeting was more of a little more of an organizational type, first kickoff reboot, um, re, kind of a redo to get us all up and running again. We did talk about that and that's probably a good idea. I was thinking about that this morning because I'm, I'm worried about what Peter just said is, is how many people, maybe, maybe even perhaps in the town hall just jumped to that table and if the phone rings and say, no, you can't do that. I mean, that's going to be, we got to be careful about that as well. I mean, if we're talking along the Route 20 quarter, being out towards Sturbridge, I don't think that's probably an issue. That, that, that could easily be, um, special permit if there were no's there. I think we need a little more of a in-depth look at one of the other parts of the town before we change that, but.
Uh, I think, Randy, could you explain the special permit just so everyone really understands the power of the planning board has for a special permit? It's not, it's not a site plan, it, it's a special permit and it's.
Yeah, yeah, site plan, if you meet all the requirements of the site plan, you know, this planning board essentially would ha, have, have to approve an application. They just, the applicant has to show they meet the requirements of site plan. A special permit, regardless if they show they meet all the requirements of the site plan, if the board is not comfortable with thinking that whatever that use may be is appropriate in that location, the board has full authority to deny that use. They might think that, uh, um, say a pharmaceutical business is perfectly, uh, acceptable in a certain location, but maybe not a Home Depot because of traffic or things like that. That, that's an example that, you know, it depends on what that special permit use board has full authority to approve or deny that particular use. They're not required to approve it just because somebody's before the board. And even if they met all the site plan requirements, if they are not comfortable that they think that use is appropriate for the property, they have full authority to deny that application.
And so what, what might be suitable for one commercial location may not be suitable for another. By special permit, it gives the board that discretionary, uh, ability to, to deny one over the other.
Right, to Peter's point too, I had a perfect example that happened this past week. Um, something personally I thought could have been appropriate on a certain property is just a no. So there wasn't an option there. And I'm like, you know, this would make sense to be there, but it was just based on the current bylaws, a no. And by putting a, changing it to a special permit opens the door where there's a possibility.
Sure.
But, but, and that brings up another question, Randy, and I'm not, I'm really not trying to push you on the spot, but how, how often do we say no on those things without? You know, again, we, we, we're.
And on certain.
Actually, do, do we document those no's? Because if we're documenting no's in the Route 20 quarter, that would actually, or any area in town, that may tell us where we may, may need to make changes.
I, well, I can, speaking from my own personal experience, it typically is stuff on the Route 20 corridors. Because, um, when you have business enterprise zone, it's set for a certain use, community businesses and other use. And there's a lot of, and you know, even industrial general, there's a lot of overlap where a use could work just as well in one zone as it would in another, especially on what's already in place on Route 20 quarter, corridor. So by opening up those opportunities is like, okay, you might have a Y in a certain zone, but maybe, maybe one of those other uses that would be a Y in the other zone could also work in this one. So it, it typically is with commercial and it usually somewhere along the Route 20 corridor. That's where it has the biggest impact.
Mr. Chair, I think we've, we've seen this and we've paid a lot of attention to this in the EDC. And, and Steve, this is like an unknowable. You don't know how many people have looked at Route 20 and never even applied because it's a no.
Because they look at.
We just don't, yeah, we don't know. And we'd, we'd rather have, I think, that ability to at least listen to their proposal. And the other thing, and if you look through, like, uh, Mr. Boria has of the zoning table, uh, a lot of these are just single uses and a lot of uses today are, are going more to mixed uses. It's a little bit of manufacturing, but retail in the front or something, you know, which is an awkward or a different or a new type of zoning that we should at least, uh, consider and hear.
Yeah.
So, yeah, all in favor of a special permit instead of a no.
I, I, I am as well. And, and it's, you know, and I'll, and I'll just add just to this group and then I'll stop. But for that kickoff meeting we had last night, I was really impressed. There's a lot of talent, Randy and Peter and, and Alicia and a lot of the other people and Sabrina and everybody else who's been on the EDC before. Um, that, there's, there's, there's a good little brain trust with Kurt, with Meskis, everybody else. That, that's a talented group and there's a lot of memory there and there's, so I think with a little bit of cheerleading and some other things moving forward and make, maybe making things a little bit easier, we can, uh, that I'm optimistic about it. I'll leave it at that.
Well, thank you. And 10 years ago, we had a partner from Glickman Cavago on the EDC. And he actually said that the commercial realtors study the zoning bylaws from each of the towns. And when they have a candidate come before them, they will actually go to the town that has a yes for what they want. They don't even bother. If you have a no in that zone, they're not going to bother bringing them before them. They won't show them the property because they're afraid of losing the client. So they will simply look at the properties where they think that person is capable. They're not going to look, if they don't think that, um, whatever they want to do is allowed in that area, then you're off the map. And so that's, I love, that's why I love the idea of the special permit, because he said it best. Um, and again, we're talking years ago, but he said he wouldn't even bother bringing them to an end because it's not worth his time.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the whole, that's one of the problems. Like people talk about, well, can we change the zoning on the property? Well, we all know that's a lengthy, you know, process and you're taking a chance at a town meeting. You never know until people vote. So by putting the special permit into place, it eliminates that problem. And also they don't have to wait that period of time, you know, when the business decide. Go ahead.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, but even, even going to special permit, that still goes in front of town meeting. But with less.
No, no, just straight through the planning board.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I thought that actually went through, because I thought we went to an exercise recently, a couple of years ago.
Through the chair, Ross, I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Both do things, a special permit versus straight no's. Are we opening up ourselves to how come you did this and why didn't you do that? And is that just going to make our job, um, more susceptible, susceptible to maybe lawsuits and to why we didn't do this and why we did do that? I'm just sort of looking at that point of it. And the other thing is, um, Steve, I, you mentioned all the people who were at the meeting last night, but most of the people who you mentioned, they're not on the EDC committee. They were just people who attended the meeting. Um, and that's something to keep in mind too.
Correct, correct. I, I wasn't reading the attendance list, I was looking at who I'm looking at right now. So I apologize.
Okay.
All right, again, back to your thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, but doesn't the special permit allow us to be as a board discretionary? And therefore.
Yeah, you, you have full discretion if the board as a whole doesn't think something's appropriate for a certain property. And I, I understand what Jean said, you had something that was a no in the past. Um, and now you're changing to a special permit, but we're, you know, this is a full comprehensive overview, you know, review of the bylaws and we're trying to keep up with the times. And we're looking at our bylaws as, you know, what we're trying to address in our current environment. That, you know, something that was a definite no in the past, we might want to reconsider to be allowed as a special permit. And we're going to have to go through it with a fine tooth comb to make sure that everybody's on the same page and comfortable with doing, with whatever that, you know? That would be one thing we'll have to sit down and actually go through the use table, you know, almost one by one and, and review that.
Yeah.
You're not.
Go ahead, Jean.
You're not saying that all the no's should be changed to special permit?
No, no, just when it's appropriate, yeah, not everything.
Okay.
Definitely don't want to go down that road, yeah.
Right, that's.
That would be bad.
For, for one example, I mean, one example is you can build a motel in a neighborhood business zone, but you couldn't build it in a business enterprise park. Which seems a little odd, but.
Right.
Those are the kind of things that could definitely be special permit that, that are currently known. So definitely good to look into each one of these and, and see what we can change and, and that should be part of this whole, this whole plan.
And, and, and Jean, and, and if I may, if, through the chair of the, as, as the town progresses and changes, I mean, now, look, we have water all the way from North Main Street to the Sturbridge line, right? We didn't have that 10 years ago. So I, I'm willing to bet Peter wants to sell water.
Peter's out of water.
And, and I'm willing to bet the rest, but I could see a little, um, a little, um, mixed use tax revenue, so.
I would also add, um, if I may, the, the, one of the things that other towns have done with their special permitting process is there is the possibility of adding, if you're uncomfortable with leaving it too ambiguous because of a specific use, you can add, um, conditions that have to, or, or findings that have to be met um, as part of why you are, are a, your. as part of why you are, are, you're deciding to, to, to deny a special permit. That can go into the decision that gets written with any special permit that's either denied or, or granted. So, you know, a lot of times you don't need to do that for every single use. You put a special permit, but if it's something that you feel is, could be potentially controversial, it's definitely possible for you to put in conditions that you think, or, or findings that the board has to find in order to say yes or no. So that way, as you have turnover on the board, you're having consistency and it's not just up to the, you know, it's not completely up to their discretion if you think that it could be a problem. Again, you don't have to because that's the special permit power. You can just, you, that's your power. As long as it's, you're allowed by state law to make it a special permit use, then you can have, the, the board can have that discretion. But there are options for things that seem like they may be sticky points in the future.
That makes me feel better, thank you.
You could find just a caveat, so when that is triggered, there's a, there's a little chart to say, well, this is why we've done it. So there, it's not something quantitative that's shown that we, we've thought, we've been thoughtful about why we're, we're issuing that special permit.
And I think this must come up with the ZBA as well. It, it sounds like a similar, you know, they're weighing the pros and cons and the conditions. And special permit sounds a lot like the ZBA process. Well, they're, it's a, it's not an outright no, go ahead and make an application to the ZBA. Same as a special permit.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead, Gene.
One of the other things that Randy brought up last night was possibly doing like an economic development zone, where maybe in that zone, we can, we have, that's the area where a TIF will be offered or other things like that to promote new growth or new businesses to come to town. And rather than doing its own zone, maybe we just do a district, do an economic development overlay district that covers, you know, Route 20, Route 169, certain areas of Main Street to, to really show, you know, you know, prospective developers and businesses that the town is willing and is, is comfortable with new development coming into town in these areas. And again, I'm not sure what else you want, you want to throw in there, but I think a TIF could, could just be a nice little carrot to, to open up some discussions and kind of get maybe some different businesses to come to town.
Thank you, Ron. Have you seen anything that, in that, in any other towns besides along that line?
As far as a specific economic development zone, that's sort of like the, the area that, where TIFs and DIFs are allowed. I've seen something vaguely similar to that in, I mean, there's things like that that are, are in, in larger communities. Definitely seen them in Worcester. Something similar I saw once in Graff and I'm not familiar with the exact details about it. And I know there was, I believe there was something similar to that in Auburn as well, but I should, I, I can take a look at those and see if I can get some more details.
All right, thank you very much.
Be interesting to know how they handle that.
Through the chair, Pete brought up a great point last night, and that is it might be worth waiving the taxes for a couple of years on a project, say like an Amazon or something huge, where you know you're going to get it after the fact, just to entice them to get into town, especially on these long-term projects. So you might lose tax revenue for a couple of years, but on the long haul, they're going to increase tax revenue exponentially.
I, I, I think we said, I think the way we left it, we, we might lose half the tax revenue for the first few years. And then, I'm teasing. But, yeah, the, the, yeah, they, they can be arranged any different way depending on how, how big the company is, what, what, what it's, what it's worth, what the, that's, that's a financial. Andrew also brought up that a local TIF also opens the door for that new business to, to further get other incentives at the higher levels, at the state and stuff like that. So even, we don't think we have to consider a 50% TIF or even anything larger. It's just, you know, case by case basis. And again, it's going to depend on, on what the company is, how bad we want them to come into town, how many jobs they're gonna, they're gonna guarantee to create and what type of impacts they're gonna have. So it, I, I truly think, much like a special permit, it's case by case. There's no precedent set and the town, that would have to go in front of the town, town meeting. And, and that would get determined then. But in the past, it's always been a dead no. And whenever you talk about a TIF in Charlton, it was always a straight up no, we don't need it. But if you look at what we've had for new growth and new commercial development over the last 15 years, there's been maybe four buildings. So, you know, maybe, maybe we need to think about doing things a little bit differently.
Yep, yep. Yep, I agree.
All right, Ron, do you have anything else going forward or when's the next time we'll meet up?
So, um, yeah, I have, I didn't have anything else on this particular topic to add. I did want to throw out that, I don't know how many, how many of you are familiar with this, but the, um, the, the housing choice provisions that were included in the economic development bill recently did get signed by the governor. So that produces a whole range of new changes for housing, for residential zoning. There's a bunch of conditions now under which residential zoning can be changed with a simple majority vote rather than two-thirds vote at town meeting. And it's, it's a pretty complicated, it's not a complicated list, but it's a pretty substantial list of things that are, are now shut, signed into law. I'm not sure how many, how like widespread the, this information has been disseminated, but I've got a, a good write-up on it from Chappa that, that put it together right before it was, the, the last version of it, right before it passed. If anyone's interested, I'll be happy to send that over to Randy. I don't know if this is something you guys have, have already heard from Chappa or other groups on.
No, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, it's pretty substantial. I was, I, I read through the law the, the other day. Unfortunately, it was actually, I think, a week ago. And then unfortunately, the, um, the, the inauguration distracted me. So I don't remember most of it. I have to look at my notes again. But now that we're past that and we're back into, you know, everything's calm right now, I'm going to reread it. I'll send it to Randy and you guys, apparently you guys. Cause there's some very interesting stuff and it can change certain things. A lot of them are, are tied to whether or not you're requiring people to, developers to put in affordable units. That changes whether or not it's a two-thirds majority versus a, just a simple majority. But yeah, there's a lot of different provisions. I can send that to Randy and he can disseminate it to, to the board so you guys know about that. As far as the next steps, I'm not sure how busy the whole board is going to be in the next month, but I would definitely like to plan for another meeting in February, at the very lea, at the very least, with a working group so that we can start going, taking a, a good look at the, the use table and the definitions and some of the other points that were brought up in the, the meeting. So we can, because I feel like, you're right, it's, it's the, it's going to take going through the, the use table with a fine tooth comb. I'm happy to, but I'll prob, what I will do is I will start going through it, doing my best guess on what I think could be changed based on my experience and what I've heard from everybody here. But obviously we, we're going to want to go through that with either the, the working group or the full planning board. It would just depend on how much your workload is going to be next month, which is two weeks away.
Ron, would that be like a red line thing where you would take what's existing and make your changes to it? What you think we're looking at?
Yeah, I already have a, a Word doc version of.
Okay.
Of the, the entire zoning bylaw. And I've been going through it, making comments as I go through. So what I would do is I would probably start with the, the table itself. Cause a lot of times as you go through that, you know, the, you'll, you'll find that there's definitions that need to be changed, so you're going to have to go back and do those kinds of structural things. And I think that going through the use table and figuring out where the, you know, exactly the types of things that we want to change line by line will unlock a lot of the other changes that we'll have to do, like talking about putting in a provision for special permit planning authority, talking about the, maybe these, these use cases that Randy was talking about where, you know, some of it is, is site plan review, some of it is, you know, just like a staff review, those type of levels. But I think starting with the, the, you know, the, the, the important thing to do. It would be a good starting point. So does the, would the planning board want to do that as an entire body? Or are you, would you be comfortable with us reconvening the working group that we had?
I think as initial, as an initial stab of it, going through the, the working group and then taking a look at that, and then there's a, a board will definitely go over that after, but.
Obviously, nothing would, nothing we would recommend would ever go to the hearing process without you going through it. But carefully yourselves, so.
It, it might be more productive to do that as a, a group than as a larger group at this point, though.
Great.
Have, have we lost any members that were in the, the, that were in the group? Okay.
No.
No, everybody's still here.
Okay.
So I guess we'll just, Ron, just shoot our name, because I think we did those on what? You know, Tuesdays or Wednesdays on day?
Yes, I believe, we were doing Wednesdays during the day.
Just figure out, let's figure out day with Randy and I guess get myself.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send something out tomorrow. I'll figure out what my, what, my, my next good day is and probably, if you, you give me a couple of weeks so that way I can go through the notes I already have and see if I can get, get a, a good, get us to a good starting point.
All right, perfect.
Okay.
All right.
Make sure I send the, that thing about the, the housing choice summary to, to Randy tomorrow as well, so that way you guys can have it to review.
Thanks, Ron, for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, do we?
If any, the members after tonight's meeting and everything have any thing that they think of off the top of their head that they want to share with Ron, just, you know, send me an email or something and I'll make sure that, you know, we discuss it at our next group meeting, so.
Yeah, I was going to say that individually, if we even went through that zoning table and, and made some comments and got that off, that would probably be, be helpful.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, especially with members that have been on the board for a while and everything experienced, so like some of the things that have worked or don't work or, you know. And also, uh, uh, one of the other areas, I think we need to tighten up a little bit more or add some or change is some of the definitions, you know. Some of them need to be clearer, some of them might need to be broken down, you know, so they're understood better. Cause sometimes that's a challenge to understand the definition or it's so vague that it leaves too much gray areas. So, well, you could look at it this way, you could interpret it that way. I think just making it more black and white will be better for everyone involved. So there's no question of what is meant.
Absolutely. All right, I think, thank any member of the ZBA and if it wasn't easy, if you had time either day, have input tonight. It all helps, thank you very much.
Okay.
Jim and Ross, I, I want to agree with Randy there. On the ZBA, basically, some of the problems that, that come, the appeals that come before the board are interpretations of what the zoning enforcement officer interprets the, the schedule and what, and what the language is in the schedule. And sometimes I can interpret it differently. So like Randy says, that will be very helpful if we get definitions, you know, more precise. Let's put it that way.
Take out some of the ambiguity, ambiguity out of.
Yeah.
Correct, yep.
So that's just reinforcing what Randy was just saying.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to sign out. You guys, um, do your fine job, what you always do.
Good night.
Good night.
Night, Steve.
Yeah, take care.
All right, moving on, we got a, eight o'clock, a Seaboard solar decommission bond approval for Turner Road. I think it was around four o'clock today, we got the Graves review.
Yeah, there was, that's correct. They had submitted their, they, they were going back and forth on the numbers and they had submitted their amended review recommendations to Graves. And Graves just had, you know, visited, one day to review it. So, and they didn't get it to me till this afternoon. Question comes up actually with this one. As you can see, Mike says he's satisfied with this. And this is the, really a question for the board at this point. When this was originally approved back in 2015, they, you know, put it as a condition of approval that it would be done as a charity bond with a three, you know, three percent annual increase every year for X number of years, which is how they proposed it, as per the conditions of approval. The question is now that we created that new planning board policy on how to determine decommissioning bonds, it's a question of whether it would apply to this project or not. Cause if you did, if you ran the numbers of our new decommission bond where it was actually under the old, the, the new policy, it would be $240,000. Two point, it's 2.4 megawatts power. That's what the finished product is. They're proposing $173,000 with the annual three percent increase, which, you know, in the end, it's going to come out to the same amount of money or maybe a little bit less. They, they're basing it over 25-year period. But the question is, the planning board want to try to uphold this policy or they want to go with what was in the original planning board decision? As you know, we're already being challenged by Zero Point on how we apply the, their decommissioning bonds.
Does, does this project meet our trigger for, for recalculation? I mean, are they adding battery storage to this?
No, they, this is the original, just took them forever to build it. So that's, see, that's where I have an issue with this. It's like, I understand the whole thing with the new policy, but this was built under, you know, it was done as per the original approval. Nothing's changed. It actually got a little smaller because they originally proposed three megawatts and they shrunk it a little bit. So with, since they have not amended their site plan in any way from what they originally proposed, does the planning board want to apply that new decommissioning bond policy as stay with the original approval? It's, 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 I know, it's a gray area, but I'm, I'm concerned about, because they haven't done anything to amend the site plan, which is what Mark LeBroski had directed the board to before that, okay, because they're amending their site plan and changing things. Yes, you do have another bite at the apple to amend the decommissioning bond. This project was built per the approval. So I don't know, we could be opening up a can of worms by changing it up on them at this point. That's what I'm concerned about. But I think by doing this at a public meeting, the board discussing this also appalls our end on why if we, the board chooses not to apply the new decommissioning bond because this project was built as it originally approved, does this change? And we have that on the record. It kind of covers the board for, you know, a challenge from Zero Point, like why'd you make us do it and not them? I mean, Zero Point clearly amended their plans, there's no question about that, so.
Stephen Campbell, do you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Steve Campbell from Navison, we're the owner of the, the facility now. I'm here with Mike Fatiglio, Mike's on, on the phone, unfortunately. I just wanted to reiterate what Randy was saying. The, the system hasn't changed. The only real issue on this project and why it's taken so long for it to get to this point is because we get tied up in the National Grid Cluster Study. We were, this, this system has been sitting around mechanically complete for almost two years. And we, we had built this back in 2019 and kept the site up to date, made sure the drainage was all. And we, we had built this back in 2019 and kept the site up to date, made sure the drainage was all, um, what it was supposed to be doing. The only reason we didn't get it interconnected back then was because of National Grid. So we're just, we're back here now trying to clear things up, clean up, do what we said we were gonna do. Get Graves to sign off on a couple of little o- other final items that needed to be done. Trees have been planted, the apron's been installed. And then the final thing was this decommissioning bond. And in fact, the original decommissioning bond was the original estimate that was approved during the planning board approval of this was less. As Randy said.
It was actually far, it was less than half.
It was far less. It was less than half. And so, um, Mike Fatiglio on my team had worked with, with Graves guys and, and we, we upped it and we brought it up into more in line with where Graves thought it would be at about $35 a kilowatt. So we've, we've worked in good faith with the town to get this to a point where we could close it out, get the surety bond in place. So I, I would hope that we haven't changed anything. So I would hope that that would, um, go a long way with what the board makes a decision in this, in this, in this case.
Thank you very much.
I, I mean, I, I feel comfortable telling the board that based on the fact that they did build this project to plan and, um, that there hasn't been any change to the original plan such as there was with Zero Point that approving the bond as it's presented, um, I think would be safer with the board to do. But I do think that on the same note, if the board decided to, um, apply the decommissioning bond policy, I don't know if we might be opening ourselves up to, you know, issues. Because, um, Mark Browski was pretty clear, because, you know, the two projects from Zero Point, the site plans clearly changed from what the original approval was done. The, the board had the authority, well, this one has not done that. And that's where I'm concerned about that if we try to apply that policy to this particular project that, um, we might be opening us up to some sort of litigation.
Yeah. I think we said that in the beginning, that that was the, 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 the point that had to change for us to update these. You know, officially, my feeling is we signed a contract here, they lived up to the contract, we can't change that now. I think the overall, you know, um, i- it's pretty close. Hundred and seventy thousand, you know, two hundred thousand, it's, it's close, so.
And they are, yeah, and their bond is, uh, subject to a three percent annual increase. So I don't know if it'll ever get up to that full 240 or whatever, but you know, that, that seven, 178 plus is the starting point. And it'll be amended annually.
Okay. I see that Laurie Deegan is on here. Laurie, are you familiar with the site? Since Laurie is our sort of expert on, uh, decommissioning and all that.
I'm not familiar. Um, could I ask, how many megawatts did you say the project was?
I gotta, I gotta run for a quick second, but I'll be back.
Okay.
It's 2.4 megawatts.
Is that DC or AC? Maybe Stephen can answer that.
It's, it's DC Laurie.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with over there. I don't even know the dollar amount. I didn't have a chance to look at anything. What is the current dollar amount?
A hundred.
Yes.
It's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
One hundred.
Hundred dollars.
And there's a 10% per year increase.
It, it sounds good, but if I could be devil's advocate, if, if we have, um, a catastrophic weather event, tornado, hurricane and, oh, you know, you have 12,000 solar panels destroyed, it will cost more than that. Hopefully Stephen's company will still be around then, um, and, and not to say anything negative about your company, Steve, but I like to think of devil's advocate and not that these panels last 20 to 30 years. We just need to protect, um, it's just an insurance policy. I would like to see it more based on all the criteria that we looked into.
Now, there's no batteries on this site, right?
No batteries.
Yeah, so I respect what you guys decide, but do I think it's gonna be sufficient? Um, no. Thank you. Thanks for asking.
We also actually discussed prior with Mike Andrade and, uh, Mike, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher his last name, I apologize. Okay, sorry, uh, that, you know, they just also made sure that, uh, they pulled up the salvage cost in it too. So that the bond is a clean bond based on whatever would cost to clean up on the project. Because, so we didn't include that salvage value number as, you know, reduction of the bond based on salvage value of anything. They've done it as a full cleanup of the site with no salvage value included.
Correct, yeah.
And one thing. For discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go right ahead. No.
In, uh, and, and this is directed to the, the zero sum team. Do you, uh, have insurance coverage? I think Ms. Deegan brings up a good point. Do you have insurance coverage on the existing facility during the life of the facility for damage or?
Yes.
You know, what, I, I guess what type of insurance do you have for the facility?
We have full coverage over the entire capacity of the build cost. It's a, a catastrophic umbrella policy, there's liability coverage. And we have to maintain that under National Grids Interconnection Service Agreement. There are requirements, it's upwards of $3 million to $5 million of coverage for catastrophic insurance coverage. And then we do that on a business perspective as we bring in, um, third-party tax investors. The tax investors look at, and, and we have to go through an insurance consultancy who looks at our replacement costs and looks at our insurance coverage to make sure, sure that we have adequate coverage over the lifetime of the project. So, yeah, we're well insured on these projects, just to, to answer what Laurie was saying.
Good. That makes me feel better.
Yeah.
Are, are you gonna be a community solar field? Just curious.
This was, we, we are heavily invested in community solar. This one is not community solar because it was done at a time when we had not made that shift. And when we applied for SOQ under the SMART program, we did not apply, so this one will not be.
That makes me happier. You'll be happy. Get some meat come out of this one. Thank you.
And one, just.
Laurie's happy, I'm happy.
Mr. Chairman, just one other thing, I wanna, just with some other owner operators, um, we're local, we're here in Massachusetts. Our office is based in Hingham, um, and a lot of these guys will own these systems for five to seven years and then flip out once the tax incentives are all extinguished. Our, our model, our business model is to own these for 25, 35 years. So, um, if anything happens, we're here locally in Massachusetts. Mike lives in South Boston, I live in Duxbury, our office is in Hingham. And so we are here and we take it very seriously on our projects that we own and operate, that we're partners with the town. And we, we want the town to feel like that. So if things come up and, and things start, um, and there's something that's out of whack, we want people to be able to reach out to us and we're local. And so as we move forward, there will be more of a presence, we'll try to do more in the community because we like being part of communities in Massachusetts as we are residents. So just for what that's worth as well.
All right. Thank you. All right, do you have any other, uh, input from the board? I know I hear that, um, they built it like they designed actually smaller and I just think that if you can, if you can put up with the bond, you'd be overstepping our authorities since.
Yeah.
No alterations, need for alterations from me.
Yeah, and should they ever decide to add battery storage in the future, that's when, you know, that could be addressed if it ever happens.
I'm happy.
Okay. All right, John Smith, you got any, any input or anything? Oh, good. Good. All right. So do we have a, Randy, we need to do a motion to.
Yeah. To vote on it.
All right, we have a motion to approve the decommissioning bond for, uh, Seaboard Solar on Turner Road.
Motion to approve.
All right, you have a second? All right, we just second. All of them favor Gene Vincent?
Aye.
Alicia Jett?
Aye.
John Clay?
Aye.
John Smith?
Aye.
Phil Fontaine?
Aye.
Ross and Randy, aye. All right, it is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, up next, uh, we have other business. Randy, do you have anything to fore? I have what I have.
No, the only, one other thing, uh, that right now, I mean, we have things in the making, but we don't have anything scheduled for our next planning board meeting. We didn't, we don't have any, um, applications that are ready for, you know, public hearing or anything. The only thing I'm anticipating at the moment, we have an A and R coming in, I don't know when, I thought it was gonna be here already. We don't have it and, uh, Tim Reardon, uh, Hammond Woods, uh, is gonna be requesting an extension. And, um, the board doesn't necessarily, he has to hear it by the next meeting as long as he, uh, submits, you know, the request before his extension runs out. So Eben Sturridge is aware of that, I've talked to him, so, um, he's planning to, to request the extension.
Um, Randy, do we, do we have anything coming up that, that, um, we're looking for a zoning change this, um, town meeting, this town meeting season? I don't think we're gonna get the zoning diagnostics done in time, but is there something that we can, that we can start looking at?
There's actually two different things and they're both along Route 20. If you're talking about a map change or a bylaw change?
Anything that needs zoning board or anything that needs town meeting approval that we would need to start getting on our agenda to discuss?
The, the two most immediate things I've had recently is two different property owners have requested, uh, map changes. One is to expand a zone and one was to, it's a property, it's on, one of the few properties on Route 20. It's actually agricultural zone and they wanted to change it to community business. And, you know, in discussions with what's been going on with the bylaws, I'm like, well, you might wanna wait and, you know, do this all in one shot. But there hasn't been any other like significant things where people are, you know, immediate things where in the bylaws themselves where somebody's requesting it, except for, actually, I take that back. The one that, uh, Peter Boyer brought up and, um, that's a, that's a tough one, I'll be honest with you. Where the, right now with our accessory apartment, you're allowed an accessory apartment in the agricultural zone. But it has to be an attached to the house and what people are wanting to do is like put an apartment over a garage or a separate building for the in-laws and everything. And that's a.
That's a slippery slope.
Yeah, it is. The problem is like, I understand you wanna do it for your, you know, the, the parent, the parent or whatever. But what happens when they're gone? Now you get a rental apartment. You know, it's like, you know, they, they're spending a lot of money to build it, they're not gonna just let it sit there. And, I mean, there's a reason why, I, I've dealt with this in every town I've been in, it always, and it comes down to the same thing. It's like, what happens to it after the current family unit is done using it, you know? Or the property sells, somebody else will say, hey, I got a rental apartment on this property, I can rent it out and make some money, you know? So it's a very, it's not an easy answer to that one.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that one, I don't think we're brave for town. That's gonna require some thought and.
Yeah.
It, to me, my experience, it always comes back to like, yeah, we're not gonna do anything because it's just the can of worms that it opens up, you know, potential for problem. I, I agree it's a good idea, but it's just that, how can we do it in such a way that, uh, you know, do we, do we wanna keep them attached? Do we wanna let people build something over a detached two-car garage, for instance? I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, to be honest with you. I do know more and more, especially over, you know, the way family dynamics are changing. You're getting two and three generational families, more and more all the time. Your kids are staying home longer, parents are living longer, so they end up, you know, living with you. But in, it's always that you want them to live with you, but not in your house, you know, with any family unit like that, so. It's, it's one of those things, just like keeping up with the times also and it's becoming, you know, people are living longer. Sure, it takes, you know, it's hard for children to get started, so I don't know. There's, it's not, there's not an easy answer to it.
No, I agree with you. Yeah, I, I mean, with that, we also may wanna think about how does Airbnb play with, uh, in the town and the zoning for that and the regulations? What if it's just, uh, renting a room out in your house, not a whole apartment? You know, very short-term rentals like a day. What, what is the zoning regulations, uh, say about that in Charlotte?
I don't think they even addressed it at the moment.
Hold on, nothing. All right, Randy, do you have anything else?
No, that's it for that. Well, oh, so back to where I started, is we really don't have anything for our next meeting. So the, the planning boards still wanna hold our next meeting or do we wanna take a night off? We, we potentially might have an A and R, but I'm really not sure. And the, the other outstanding item that we're gonna be able to schedule for our next meeting is the Tim Reardon, uh, extension. If, you know, I receive it in time. So, because anything else, we have to do public hearings and between the noticing requirements and everything, we couldn't do it through, for our February 3rd meeting, it would have to be February 17th.
I guess, hold, I don't know, I'm just throwing this out there, hold it open until like the day it needs to be posted, the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we can always cancel, yeah.
Yeah, someone comes in with a couple A and Rs you get and we can throw Tim, Tim Reardon's on. Stuff, I just wanna hold anyone out.
Yeah, well, that's the only thing is with this, we're our project, I think it's gonna consume some of our time. So getting everything off our plate beforehand might be easier.
You know, even to discuss zoning might be a good idea too. You know, prior to going back to doing, looking at the diagnostics again, if we can come up with some things as a board and discuss amongst ourselves what we're expecting to see out of it and the board and some ideas that I think would be good.
Well, it might be good.
Come together with you, you know, read that, read our guesses and knows and come together for an hour just to hash some stuff to see if we can get in a straight line.
Yeah, get a homework for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, those juice tables, I think that's where, you know, good place to focus at the moment.
Okay.
All right. So Tuesday, yesterday, sorry, I got an email from Randy and this whole issue about EDC director is hanging out there. They've been dealing with for the last four years as far as selecting, lucking to name Randy Dotchit, the director of the EDC. So I guess since Randy works for us, I guess the question is, do we want Randy to be putting his time into the EDC when we've been adamant and going back and forth that him being the director gets the EDC up and running again? I just wanna get the board's thoughts, for someone to throw that out there about what he's dealing with now, so.
You, you know, would, would Randy be willing to do it for a, a set specific amount of time until the board gets up and running? And, and either that or we transition him to a dual role of, of, a dual paid role of EDC director and planning director?
This is the fight we've been having and.
Yeah, you know, it's, it might be one of those things where you've gotta get in there and do the job before they appreciate you and they're doing the job.
I have someone to take advantage of it indeed.
Well, I, see, that's the problem, they are taking advantage already, so to say that they're not going to, they're already doing it. They're expecting me to do the work and I, I said, I, I honestly don't mind helping. And I don't even mind if they gave me a probation period or anything, but I think, you know, it's like once, it's like, well, you've been doing it for free all this time, why are we gonna start paying you? That's what it will end up being.
Yeah, I, I get it, I get it, I get it.
I mean, I.
I attended that meeting last night and Randy is not even a member, according to, uh, Andrew of the EDC committee. I mean, he's not listed as a member.
No.
And I don't think, if he's not even a member, why should we donate his coin to them? I mean, they're looking for a chairman based on. I mean, they're looking for a chairman based on the nine members of their board. I don't feel, I don't think they're going about it the right way, but that's just my opinion. If they have a chairman and they elected chairman, let the chairman do it. And I don't think that Randy should do it for any free time. If they're going to have their meetings at night, I don't think Randy should attend them. You know, if they're going to be in the daytime when he can attend them on our dime, that's fine. I don't think he should be giving his free time to their meetings when they don't even recognize him as a member.
Go right ahead, I'll just know.
Through the chair?
I'll go right ahead.
So I, 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 so they, we, I think two, two meetings ago, we, I believe Randy had that stipend that he was going to get and it's, so I take it they never came across with the cash to give to Randy to, that was implied or.
I don't even know if it's been discussed at the board's selectment, to be honest with you. I don't think it's gotten that far.
It has been voted on and it's there, I mean, it's been allocated, so I don't know where this money is at.
Well.
No, there was no money for him.
Yeah, it's not in the budget.
Not for Randy to be EDC director, that money has never been allocated. What Randy is getting paid for now is for planning director, a town planner, whatever you want to call it. If he were to take over EDC and do all that, that we had talked about, that there would be a six thousand dollar increase to his salary for doing that. In my mind, EDC is the portion of, or the, the, the commission that goes out and tries to bring new businesses into the town. Now, there's a fine line between that and somebody coming into the town without any coaxing from any of us. And Randy handles that as somebody coming to the planning board and can we do this and can we do that? And that's fine. The EDC is, when Alan was here was, you know, he set up the, the meetings at the, or the things at this DCU center where they had booths set up and everything and that was actually more involved in everything. If they're expecting Randy to do that, no, there has to be some cash. And I just feel that if he, he's not even a member of the board, so why should, why should he donate his time to them? Just remember that he's our employee, he's not the town's employee per se.
That was part of the issue with it last year too, is they wanted the EDC directed to be under their purview of the town administrator. And I work for the planning board and how can you be, you basically end up with two bosses, how can you do that? You know, and, you know, we have, the planning board is telling me to do one thing and then I'm supposed to be, you know, the town administrator is telling me to do something else. It should be, you know, one person, one person group, whoever it is to oversee me, like the, the planning board is, you know, in charge of me, then they should be for both planning board and EDC. My opinion, but.
Correct. And the other thing was that they wanted to pay Randy as a stipend instead of anything into his salary. And, you know, the stipend is good for one year and to come the next budget, they say, okay, we're doing away with stipends and, you know, Randy still has the responsibility without any additional pay, I don't think that's right.
Yeah, I totally agree. Alicia, did you have a comment at all? No?
I did, actually.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I wanted to comment last night on the EDC director because Andrew made a very not nice comment about the fact that we'd have to wait to fin come, but we've been going around dropping about this for years. Randy should be the head of the EDC, it just is in, and, you know, it, he just should be. And at the end of the day, they should recognize that, but I think Andrew's seeing an extra bump in his salary and I'm sorry for that. But Randy is that guy, we hired him under that purview, it was actually in his job description.
Right.
Well, that's.
Right, you know, when we hired him, he had EDC qualifications and that was one reason we did hire him. But he was hired as a town planner and the EDC portion was not part of his job.
Yeah, at the time.
But we knew we could handle it if we wanted to go forward with it.
That's it, and my concern is that, I'm sorry, my, my concern is that Andrew has said two times, you know, it's, it's not in the budget, that's what he's been saying the whole time. Well, we've gone through two town meetings and it's never even been brought up, you know, so it doesn't, it's, you know, it seemed, I'm sorry I had to say it this way, but it seems like a lame excuse. To avoid dealing.
I agree.
You know, I'm it's like, it hasn't even made it to town meeting to even see if the, the townspeople would vote on it, you know? And if it's going to be a change in the budget, they'll have to.
It was done four, five years ago, a town meeting, the town meeting orders, and I just think that someone's just not knowledgeable about how this town government's set up, I think that might be a problem. There's a choice set on that side for whatever reason, I don't know. So I guess the question is, who is the board wanting to direct Randy to? Not attend any of the EDC stuff and then I, what do we want to, I mean, listen, he works for us, he's doing a great job and we just don't want to see him put in a precarious position.
Sure, I, I mean, if, if it's during normal work hours, I'd say, you know, attend as a consultant. You don't take any on any, any leadership responsibilities, but as a consultant, yes, if it's off hours, I'd say no.
Jean or John, you have any, or Alicia, you have any more input from what John just suggested, isn't a bad idea?
I mean, you're doing it for, for nothing, Randy, that's, that's putting yourself, and it just, you do it out of the goodness of your heart, but then it, then it gets to like, well, why am I doing, it just, it just creates a turmoil in yourself, even though, which is, and you're busy enough, so if, if, if they can't appreciate that, that's, it's wrong of them to do that, so I, 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 I can't understand that. And the reason why we wanted to do it this way was we wanted to wrestle the control away from the town administrator. Because last time it turned into a shit show, because it wasn't being done correctly.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't disagree.
Through the chair, you know, my, my, you know, opinion, yeah, the history here has been, uh, it's obviously a very complimentary role, the EDC director to the planning director. But it is a distinct role, you know, it should just be compensated as certainly at least stipend, but more appropriately probably salary, so I would say, you know, you, you shouldn't, well, it's, it, I guess it's up to Randy, but you, you shouldn't do it unless it becomes more of a structured role with a real salary and, you know, evaluation requirements of the job have to be listed and because then you have to be evaluated against it, so.
But I mean.
It has to be very structured.
That's the problem, we, we basically had this conversation a year ago and I understand with COVID, but nothing has resulted from it, except for the administrator is now kind of redesigned the EDC himself where it's the members and then he lumped all the staff on it and he does have authority under a bunch of staff and whether they take issue with, they're going to be doing additional work and everything, that's completely up to them, but I'm in a unique circumstance where I work for the board, so the board has to approve. I mean, it seems to me even, even if the board told me, yes, you're going to have to do this, that the town administrator has to get approval from the board, that I can't just take it upon myself to do something on the south side of what the board is allowing me to do per my job description.
Exactly, exactly, I agree with that fully. And the price, we had had, at one time, the town administrator was looking for somebody else from town to be the EDC director, commissioner, whatever they wanted to call them, at a price of like twelve thousand dollars a year. And we countered that with, okay, we could have Randy do it, like, and the price at that time was we were looking at six thousand dollars and I think that was a year or so ago. And with inflation and all, that should be up to like sixty-two hundred dollars now per year and as part of a salary, not as a stipend. I just, you know, if, if the town administrator wants to set up a board and have a chairman to the board for the EDC and let that chairman, you know, post all the meetings, do the minutes and do all that, that's fine. Randy, if the meetings are within, you know, his hours at town hall, will attend them and add whatever he has to add. If there are meetings at night, I say no, he just shouldn't attend them. That we've been down the road before and the can has been kicked many times.
Way too many. Way too many. So, all right, so the sense of the, I've got from the board is that Randy can put his time into the EDC if he's not going to gain compensated. The next question is, do we send a memo to the town administrator? Just making him aware of what the board has directed the planning director to do?
I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Don and John.
Yeah.
All right, just to make him aware and.
Through the chair, I mean, a, a different point of view may be, I mean, Randy, uh, what, what if the town just makes Randy an offer, you know, this much money for this role? Randy's free to do what he wants outside of his obligations for the planning board director role. So that, I, I don't think we can prevent Randy from being the EDC director if he wants, but they should make him an offer and, you know, he, he could.
Exactly. Because there's a separate line item for the EDC committee and as their director, whatever they want to call it. And if Randy wants to accept, well, that's fine, it's fine, it's fine with me, I can't speak for the whole board, but that would be fine with me. But I don't think he should be taking planning board time to be doing a lot of extra stuff that it wasn't there when we hired him.
See, that's where I, you know, I understand what Bill is saying, but that is, uh, it, it is difficult to do. Some of the, the job times going to overlap, it's, it's hard to prevent that, I mean, the town hall's closed on Fridays. Yes, I can do EDC work then and everything, but that is not really, when everybody else is gone, it's, you can't do much by yourself, so, I mean, it's just, you know that time, there's going to be time that overlaps with the planning board. So that I want, become to, the planning board is aware that there's certain times that I might be doing EDC work during my regular work hours, you know? Like if you have to finish a minute or post a meeting or something, I don't want to get into a conflict with the planning board that I, I was doing something that I shouldn't be doing during the, that's why I think the planning board honestly should have the authority over the planning director and the EDC director. That way you have full control of both positions.
Right, and you could do whatever you needed to do, when you needed to do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, of course, I got to, you know, I use my time accordingly and everything and, you know, dedicate my time to EDC. EDCs ends up being a lot of the time, it's off hours actually, sometimes in on hours, but, uh, either way, it still takes up some of your time, but I'd still think that it'd be better, I'm taking the job outside of what my planning director job is, I, that might be a not such a wise move on my part, I guess.
Randy, whatever you're comfortable with, I mean, if the town makes you an offer for the EDC director and you come to us and say this is what you want to do, we will work with you, you know, as long as you're getting paid for.
Well, I, I honestly don't think they're going to do that, because the.
I don't think so either.
The town administrator doesn't want to give me a dime, you know, and, and I honestly just don't think that they're going to keep pushing and pushing and pushing until they're told, no, you can't do that, you know? I don't know what his reasoning is for, but he just does not seem to be open to having, I don't know if it's pay or what the reason is, but doesn't seem to be opening to wanting to have the EDC director position.
And I think that's why Ross had a good idea about writing a letter and putting it down in writing and, you know, and everything squared away.
Yeah, I agree, I think so, everybody's on the same page.
Right. And since the town, if one seemed to put anything in writing, maybe the planning board needs to step up and put it in writing.
Right.
All right, so I guess like Randy, that memo just, like at our January twentieth meeting, the the, the board all made the decision to direct you being under the direction of the planning board, we directed you to no longer put any time into the EDC since, hey, you're not being, since you won't be getting compensated for being the director, you know, no longer put for time for the EDC.
Okay, I'll, I'll send the draft that everybody will get before I send it out, just to make sure.
Yeah. All right, does anyone have anything else tonight?
Nobody does, I made a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, Jean Vincent?
Aye.
Aye.
Alicia Jett, I hear you.
Aye.
Don Clay?
Aye.
John Smith?
Aye.
Bill Fontaine?
Aye, aye, Captain.
All right, everyone have a great rest of the week, we will be in touch.
Hey, have a good night.
Have a good trip.
Are you going to be at our next meeting or are you taking off?
Yeah, are you going to be on via Zoom or?
I will be on via Zoom, assuming I have cell phone coverage and stuff, so, yeah, I'll be checking in next week.
Okay, so, well, we'll, we'll keep you in the loop then, in case you can't.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Happy.
Yeah, good, good night.
Bye.
Good night.